Business discussion item for the morning, 2025-159 Downtown Events Grant Program Update, with the recommendation the City Commission approve the updated Downtown Events Grant Program as presented.
Very good. Matt of Acting Manager, good morning.
We have the Gainesville Community Reinvestment Area to provide this update, so Daniel, I'll turn it over to you.
Good morning, Doctor Bloomberg.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. My name again is Daniel Blumberg. I'm going to present the Downtown Events Grant Program update to you this morning. So, quick run-through of our agenda. First, an update on the pilot program, followed by a review of the proposed program revisions. I'll go over the proposed timeline of the revised program, and then we'll provide our recommendation. In January, the Downtown Advisory Board recommended extending the program using the rolled-over FY24 remaining funds to run the program through June 30th. There were $30,000 of remaining FY24 funds. The City Manager did approve those funds to be used. The G-CRA had reached out to our previous applicants and listed the reopening of the program on a limited basis to funding for the events through the June 30th date. On February 18th, the G-CRA Evaluation Committee met and has recommended that seven of the applicants receive funding. We had eight applicants at that time, but we only had $30,000 of funds. So, the first six of them would be receiving full amounts, and the seventh applicant would be receiving the balance of what was available. Those applications will be sent to the City Manager for final approval shortly. So, these next few slides, we'll go over the major proposed updates compared to the original guideline. In the back, it was a PDF that showed all of the proposed revisions. Basically, it showed the complete markup on the program. So, we're just going to go through these one at a time for the major changes. The grant reimbursement previously was 100% grants in the pilot. From the feedback of the Downtown Advisory Board, they recommended bringing that down to a 50% matching grant. So, if they spent $10,000, they would be able to receive $5,000 back on the Tier 1. So, we'll get to that in just a moment. The area for the program is, let's slip back to the slide here. This actually shows the area for where the Downtown Event Grant Program applies to. This did not change between the pilot and this current update to the program. One of the things that we did change, recommended being changed, is previously it could only occur in publicly-owned spaces, being the Streeterie or Boedidley Plaza. That excluded any privately-owned event spaces. Recommended change on that is basically they have to have substantial public access on that private entity's location. For example, a free access day for every three days of the event. That opens the program up to additional events to be able to be encouraged within our community based on that. allowable reimbursement costs. Previously, the program did value $25 an hour for volunteers. Per the recommendation from our advisory board, we've removed that from the program. The next component on here, previously donations or in-kind valuation was allowed towards grant funds costs. That has also been modified to only eligible costs are hard costs paid for by the applicant and approved by the G-CRA. Under the pilot program, we allowed for up to three days for the event. I'll give an example for how that played out for one of the events. The Latina Movie Festival occurred over the course of three weeks. They did apply, they did receive grant funds, but we could only assist them for three days at that event. So, this change would allow for consecutive days up to 21, or consecutive weekends, Friday through Sunday. So, this way it gives more flexibility for them to be able to have a longer-running event as opposed to just single days, up to three days. Next major change, the program originally had a single award level of up to $5,000. The change in the program keeps that for the small events, for 5,000, and Tier 2 large-scale events of up to $30,000. Going directly into the available funding tiers, this new section details for the events themselves, the purpose, funding amount, focus, and application process. We have increased the number of points required to qualify for the Tier 1. Previously, you had to have two points to qualify. We've increased that to three points to qualify. One point must be how the event positively impacts the downtown event community and meets at least two of the city's strategic goals. So, as mentioned, we switched this to, there we go. As mentioned, we didn't have previously a Tier 2, so we have created a ranking system for Tier 2. There will be, if this is approved, a request for quotation that will be put out in coordination with procurement to have community members, event organizers submit proposals that will then get ranked by an evaluation committee, and then they will present to the Downtown Advisory Board their recommendation, their presentation for the Downtown Advisory Board to give a recommendation for who to award those grant funds towards. And again, they would get 10 minutes' presentation of the Downtown Advisory Board to be able to do that. The program funding levels, the major change there was previously they were all up to $5,000. Because there are two tiers now, Tier 1, Tier 2, it would be 40% of the funding for the year would go towards the Tier 1, that's the $5,000 grants, and 60% would go towards the Tier 2. We currently have an FY25, $100,000. That would mean $40,000 would be available for the Tier 1s, and $60,000 for the Tier So, previously, we did not have a post-event analysis, did not exist under the previous program. It does require the applicants that had their events to actually provide to us recommendations on what they're going to do to make their event better for the next year, as well as to provide us metrics, as well as their budgetary information post-event, so we're able to see those numbers. The grant recipient also is going to be required to list the city and G-CRA as sponsors, so we'll provide them basically a synopsis of this is going to be in your advertising material, whether it's on radio or print for your event that you're going to be hosting. In our program, we did have a budget table. We've made that clear for people to understand, and we actually will be supplying them a pro forma sheet for them to be able to do a more complete budget to us, so we'll be better able to analyze those going forward. Our Downtown Advisory Board, they actually met and discussed the program over the course of several months. Last month, they did recommend that we bring the Downtown Events Grant Program to the City Commission unanimously for City Commissioner view and approval. And I have here a copy of the proposed timeline for the program. Today, obviously, we're presenting to the City Commission. The goal is April/May for the large-scale event opportunity would be posted. For event planners, submit their proposals. Posting evaluation period would take approximately three months. July, August, the top three respondents come to the Downtown Advisory Board for review and selection of events to receive funding. That would be for the Tier 2 events. As I mentioned earlier, we have $100,000 in FY25 available for funding. Again, that would be $40,000 for the Tier 1 and $60,000 for the Tier 2. And the recommendation was City Commissioner approve the presented update to the Downtown Events Grants Program.
Thank you very much. I don't see any lights, but I'm sure people have opinions on this. Mr. Willis.
Thank you, Dr. Bloomberg. Question about the, how many, the consecutive weekends? Is that just two consecutive weekends, or is this? What is that?
It is, the weekends are supposed to be consecutive weekends.
Is that two weekends in a row? Is it four weekends in a row?
It would be two weekends in a row.
Just two?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Because I had concern about if it's many, many weekends in a row. It starts to sound like some organization's normal programming as opposed to something that's really supposed to bring an increased number over a shorter period of time to something. So, thank you for that. That's all I have right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Willis. Commissioner Eastman.
Thank you. Dr. Bloomberg, can you give us a list of some of the events that were funded? Out of the last one, I know you guys did that at a previous meeting, but...
So, the events that we had at our February 18th Review Committee that are going to be receiving funds pending City Manager approval will be Deon Dia Records, as well as Hal Bazaar and the Bull. Those are all going to be Deon Dia Records will be at Southwest Second Street. That would be April 11th. Hal Bazaar's event would be at the Streeterie, April 5th, the Bull, that's going to be there. Gainesville St. Patrick's Day, 2025, that would be at the Streeterie. Words Off the Paper would be at the Hippodrome, March 22nd and 23rd. The Bailey Learning and Arts Collective will be at the Streeterie on May 3rd. Red Mantle will be at the Hippodrome on April 18th. Carolyn's Heart Incorporated will be at Boedidley on May 10th, and those are the ones that were receiving funding for the $30,000.
Okay. And as you said, there was significantly more people that applied than received the total?
We had one more application that met our timeframe to be able to do this review, and then we had expended all of the $30,000 at that point that we had from the leftover FY24 funds.
Okay. So, slightly more, but not significantly. Yeah. So, I guess my question, and this was one of the main things that came up last time, was the decision of using, whether this should be in public space versus can we use private space that would give, as you guys put here, substantial public access? Why was that change made in this iteration?
So, I'll give an example. So, one of the businesses or applicants that wanted to apply, applied for doing an interactive wall, and they wanted to do the interactive wall in coordination with the Hal Bazar's big events that is going to be over near Porters.
Yeah.
And the interactive wall would have been in the parking lot for the Knots. And they needed funds to be able to do, to be able to put that wall up. But because that was in the parking lot of the Knot, that was on private property, it would have had 100% public access because you would have been able to go up to it. That was the whole point of being able to put it there. But because of the way the program is written, it could not happen. We couldn't supply any grant funds. They would have been in this pool, but because they were basically ruled out of being able to apply for the funds because of that. So, this is to allow a means for us to be able to help support events like that, or interactive walls, or other, you know, fantastic ideas that might come to us that might not be on city property, but would have free access for people to be able to get to.
Yeah. I mean, one of the things that concerned me about having it be substantial public access last time is that theoretically, every bar that has any event, most of them are free. You know, that would, those would, significant amount of events that are already taking place that, you know, are within established locations would theoretically be available for this kind of funding. And the idea was sort of to allow the Streeterie to be programmed more, Boedidley Plaza to be programmed more. I don't have any real problem with having an outdoor space for parking lot, you know, within a parking lot. I mean, that is basically, for all intents and purposes, you know, public space people are walking past, people might not even think of it beyond, you know, this is an open space that is not an open space. But I guess my real question is, is so does this now open up, like, let's say the Bull is having a, you know, free event within there, or, you know, any number of, or any of the other businesses down there? Would they be able to apply for that, just, you know, if they have a band playing within there, things like that, and apply for the $5,000 total?
So, yes. If a band, if someone wanted to bring a band in, and they were, for example, going to pay for the members of the band to actually come and play, so maybe, I'm just going to say random Foo Fighters. Maybe they wanted to have the Foo Fighters show up to play here at one of the bars. So, they could apply for grant funds to do that, and they could make it free for people to go to the bar to be able to do that. So, as an example, they could potentially apply to do something along those lines because it would be free access. So, it's substantial. So, the other example I mentioned was Hal Bazaar's big event.
Right.
So, that is primarily on private property for where they're doing that. So, we couldn't support that under the current version of the program.
Right.
At all. Even if they had a free day where it wasn't a ticket a day and people could go in there, we couldn't support it in any way. But this would allow for that to actually occur, where we could potentially assist them in supporting that event.
Is there enhanced scoring at all if it's, if we're programming, you know, the city-owned public space, or is that, or it's just public access or neutral?
So, the Tier 1 scoring, basically, it's six pieces. One is, does it contribute to downtown as a required? You have to, it has to be a net positive.
Right.
And then the other points that are available are basically the city's strategic goals. Do you meet these? You have to meet at least two of them. The Tier 2, the larger-scale funds, that's going to have a ranking to them. And if, can I, Broadcast, pull up the slide I asked you to take a look at earlier before I came in this morning, because I figured this might come up. So, we do have a ranking deadline in the program, and they're going to, I think they're pulling that up right now so you can see it on the screen as well. But this is what we would be looking at for the Evaluation Committee for looking for the Tier 2. So, would be doing a ranking for that. I think they're trying to pull it up right now, but I do have a copy of it here as well. There we go. It is, it is smaller on this screen, but this would be the ranking system that the Evaluation Committee would be looking at, where it'd be looking at experience and qualifications, potential for economic and community impact, management approach and feasibility, marketing and promotion strategy, quality of proposed partners, alignment with city's Gainesville strategic goals, if they were a local event organizer, and scheduling the event during an off-peak timeframe for events in Gainesville's downtown. So, this is what the Evaluation Committee would be looking at for going over the Tier 2 applicants.
Yeah. And then, so that's good, and I'd be excited, I'm interested to see how that plays forward. Going back to the, to the small business, to the smaller one, let's say you get, you know, 100 applicants in, and then you can only fund, let's say, again, eight of those. How do you, how would you guys determine prioritization? Would that just be internally with the G-CRA?
The prioritization of those would remain the same. It would be first come, first served for funding until funding was expended. So, we wouldn't, right now, there's no means of holding off on some of that funding until a later time. It is an open process for people to be able to apply. We were looking at opening that back up starting May 1st for applications for the Tier 1.
Okay. All right. All right, thank you. That's all the questions I have for Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Eastman, Commissioner Duncan Walker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for this presentation, Dr. Bloomberg. And Commissioner, thank you for asking the question about prioritization, because that was something that did come across my mind. I'm curious about the smaller organizations who'll be applying for these grants. Obviously, some of our organizations are a lot more used to applying than others, and it does not mean that some of the smaller groups don't have wonderful ideas that we should be taking a look at or considering. So, I'm curious if G-CRA provides any type of capacity-building opportunities for some of the organizations that may or may not fully understand exactly how to complete your grant application process or how to do a budget. I'm distinctly recalling someone that came to us a few years ago with a great idea that they wanted to put forward, but they were inexperienced when it came to pulling together a budget. So, we have this wonderful pot of money where we want to fund people in the community with great ideas, but do we provide any type of capacity building for them?
So, we are happy, of course, to meet with anybody who would like to come to put in an application for any of their ideas and to work with them to put in the application. And I'm going to ask Broadcast to go to page 12, which actually does show the budget up there. So, if you scroll down a few pages, keep going, please. Keep going. There. One, that's, so this is, this is the application budget that we're asking them to provide us on the initial pass. So, they can provide that to us, and basically it's going to show us what their expenses they're anticipating are going to be. We do have a more complete spreadsheet that we'll go over with them, but we're trying to keep it very, very easy in the application process so that they can give us a rough idea, and so that they can understand themselves, a rough idea of what their budget is going to be and what's amount of funds they're going to be expending, what amount of funds that they would be asking for from us. But we are more than welcome, more than welcoming to anybody that would like to come to speak to us about their, their ideas that they'd like to apply for a grant for. We also have a community partnership grant program that does cover our entire boundary. And we do have a number of smaller organizations that have applied for grants and will continue to apply for grants. One of the great organizations, Greater Duval Neighborhood Association, puts in applications. So, there are smaller groups that are out there, and we are going to be having events at G-Tech where we will actually advertise so that they can come in and be given a walkthrough of this is how you can apply for our programs. We will be scheduling those for the Community Partnership Grant Program, the Downtown Event Grant Program, as well as the Business Improvement Grant Program.
Wonderful. Thank you for that. And I did have just a brief question about the marketing. I think, let me see if I can get to it quickly here. It says something about requires the applicant to follow City of Gainesville G-CRA marketing requirements. And without asking you to go too deep into the weeds here, I'm just curious, are we helping to market individuals' programs that come through this grant program, or are they in our event listing? Are we supporting them in any way from a marketing perspective there, or are these organizations solely responsible for their own marketing efforts?
So, they will be listed in the city's event planning because we are helping to support them. So, they will be listed there.
Good.
We are, when we have events that were coming up, we do have a Facebook account, so we are trying to keep up to date with, we have an event coming up for whatever the next event is, so people are aware in the community as well from our Facebook's section as well. We are not telling them, go advertise in the Main Street Daily or go buy a billboard, that their marketing budget is really for them to determine how they're going to market their events. But we definitely want to help get the word out that the event is going to be occurring.
Gotcha. So, the city does provide a level of support for them?
We do provide a level of support in that we are giving them verbiage to use for our support in their marketing materials.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Bloomberg. I conclude.
Thank you. Commissioner Duncan Walker, Commissioner Book.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I really appreciate the Downtown Advisory Board kind of making the revisions, really looking at the specific incentives that we can do and making sure that the program is operational and somewhat intuitive. I looked at the guide, the guide's not very long, it's about 15 pages. I know that some of these pages that you showed are from there. It seems pretty straightforward, so I think that's good. We want to make it as easy as possible to get new partners and stakeholders, which is, I think, what Commissioner Duncan Walker is talking about, is not, it's, it's great that the same businesses and players are coming, that they're familiar with the system, but we have so many more that we can bring down to downtown. We have a lot of good cultural events and artistic events and spoken work. My particular interest would be, how can we penetrate maybe the youth audience and get more youth-oriented events? Because you bring kids and families down there, then you've just brought a whole new market to downtown. Great for economic development, great for vitality, great for the businesses that are around, they see what's down there, and we've brought a new, a new dynamic. We have had a lot of youth events down there, but specific to this grant program, if there's any way the G-CRA can penetrate those audiences, maybe some of the local school-based magazines, they're very inexpensive, to advertise in would be a great place. You know, your scholastic chess associations, gaming associations may really help us get some new, some new people down there that would really then enjoy future times downtown. So, that's just a couple of comments. I wondered in the program, Dr. Bloomberg, if, is there any opportunity for someone to apply and then incentivize, for example, a coupon or something to go into a local business? Would that be something that might be allowed? I'm thinking out loud here. I'm trying, how do you get people to come to downtown, but as part of that event, they're encouraged to go and go to a business? Go to the record store? Go to a restaurant? Go to a clothing store?
So, it is, it is a Downtown Events Grant Program. So, if they had, for example, maybe some sort of art walk, and they were trying to help incentivize the arts, and they were, part of the program was, their goal was to help give discount coupons to people so that they could go make purchases of art. That's, that is a possibility. The program, for the reimbursement aspect of the program, is going to cover their hard costs. So, the hard cost would be printing the coupons, the hard cost would be marketing of that. The hard costs probably would not be the coupon, it's the face value of the coupon, but it could be organizing the events with the businesses itself or themselves that are going to be accepting the coupon. So, I would say it's likely that that would be able to be functionally implemented, but we would need to see an actual application so that we can work with them to work that through.
Yeah. I'm mindful of what Commissioner Eastman, what you said is, you know, as far as what we're doing as it relates, specific to monies that may go directly to a business. But I wondered if there's ways within the program, this may be something the Downtown Advisory Board could take up, is that as part of an event, you have businesses that provide, oh, you're at this event, you bring this in, now you get $5 off, and so it, it kind of benefits all. And if that might be a component. It's just me thinking out loud related to how you leverage the event that's right there for the benefit of that entire area. So, very exciting and very much in support of this good program. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bloomberg. Thank you. Commissioner Eastman.
Thank you. I, since you mentioned the updates from the Downtown Advisory Board, I'm now going back through the minutes from their February meeting, and I think a lot of these are quite good. They moved to applicants for the Tier 2 component, define public benefit, increase, you know, what the, the amount of the public benefit. But then they do speak primarily, they do speak to this question of publicly-owned spaces. So, you guys originally brought forward that from 100% has to be in publicly-owned spaces to just a simple majority. Why did you originally bring that forward as how you wanted to? And would that have solved the problem, I think, of the, I guess, that wall that is in the, that is in that public space? But why did you originally bring forward the 51% versus the, the impact of just having it 100% with them?
The original idea for the 51% was looking at it based off of, for example, the area, the acreage of where they were doing the events.
Right.
Is 51% of it going to be the majority public space as opposed to 49% being the private space? But then it was parsed, are you looking just at acreage? Are you looking at the board? The Downtown Advisory Board felt that it was easier not to put that limiter on there of 51%. And so, that's why that 51% was then removed from that component.
So, that would be total acreage? So, like an art walk, for instance, is mostly in private businesses, but then, of course, people are walking on public roads between all those private businesses. Would that, could that be eligible for the grant in its, I guess, I guess, the current form, the 100% form, or the 51%?
The current form is presented, in art, in art walk, for example, perhaps they're going to have a day of art focus at a certain location.
Right.
And then at that location, then they get the coupons so they can go to different locations to make a purchase. It's hard to posit on that without seeing what it is they actually want to do for that applicant. I, the 51% versus 49%, the problem, the problem for an art walk component of that is, where do you draw the limit of what the extent of that area was?
Right.
Are they going to be able to go somewhere else outside of downtown, perhaps, and be able to use that coupon?
Right. Well, I guess my, my concern still with the substantial public access is kind of what I spoke about before, is that, I mean, it, nearly everything that happens in downtown is free entry and is just an event that people can go in and do for free. And so, if it's first come, first served, I could just see this being sort of a run on all the events that are already occurring, and now there's a $5,000 component to it, which is not really what the purpose of it is. Even if there's events that are happening, if they're happening on our street or in Boedidley Plaza, even if they were like, we just had AM FM Festival this past weekend where probably, I mean, there was three stages, one was outside on public space, there was two, like, that clearly helped the economy of the entire area, because people were walking between various places. But, you know, if you think about, there's a dance club and it's free entry and you can buy drinks inside. I, because it's first come, first served, you guys can't determine, okay, well, that doesn't pass the smell test of this per se, that's okay, well, that is substantial public access, it's free entry, it's private space. But, you know, I, I don't know if that was really the intent originally of what we were trying to do with the events. And so, that, that, that is my concern. I don't know how to clean it up. I almost feel like going back to your 51% original one, taking everything that the Downtown Advisory Board did, but then keeping the 51%, and then seeing if on, you know, on our third iteration of this, if we could clean out some of the language. But I, I, yeah, I'm just, I am concerned that this, this opens it up to a significantly larger amount of applicants that aren't necessarily in the direction that we're looking at, at going, that aren't necessarily, you know, because substantially supporting, is that, is that the term used? The downtown, you know, downtown economy is kind of open to a The downtown, you know, downtown economy is kind of open to interpretation, but you guys aren't scoring it. This is just, if you pass, it's binary. You pass go, you get the five thousand, you don't, you don't get it. And so it's, it could, yeah, just open up a whole lot of applicants. And I could see it being drained out quickly, which was my concern about it. So I almost want to go back to the original one that staff came forward with, but I'm happy to hear some other folks' thoughts about it.
Thank you, Commissioner Eastman. Commissioner Willetts?
So I, I have the same kind of similar concern. That's what I mentioned. I was worried about multiple weekends where it's like, that just sounds like your normal programming, and it's going to be your small group of normal patrons that are just going to keep on showing up to. If it's only two weekends in a row, I kind of get that a little more. So I, you know, I, part of this is written in that it's, they get points for making, being off-peak, right? So like, if Fest was like, well, we want to have a children's punk event in somewhere, it's in a private business, but we want, that's what we want to open up to. Well, it's a, it's a busy weekend, we're already, that's not, I don't think the Downtown Advisory Board was like, no, no, y'all can do that on your own, you know, you don't need any extra funds to do that. So I, I trust a little bit that Downtown Advisory Board is going to be able to sift through stuff and tell us a little, you know, like, they're going to know, they're going to say like, no, that's what y'all already do, or ten other people already do that, that's not really going to have a synergy. And so in some of that private space, particularly for the thirty thousand, you know, again, Downtown Advisory Board is going to hear this and give us some advice. But I have a similar concern that it's, if all the benefit is inside of one, if all the benefit is inside one business, particularly because it's larger, like Heartwood Soundstage, they have an ecosystem where it's all benefiting almost inside, right? There are other businesses on the main property, but there are individual businesses on that property. So that's an argument that they, you're impacting multiple businesses. But I, so I have some similar concerns about that. I also understand this is, five thousand dollars is a small, it's a small enough amount that we are not putting all our eggs in one basket, right? And that's that idea that it's limited to five thousand and that's forty percent. So we're not putting all the eggs in one basket. But I, but I also understand that in a downtown, we have all these public spaces and private spaces in close proximity. The parking lot of the knot was a good example of, it's there, it's almost, parking lots are almost treated as public space, though they're, though they are not truly public space. So to some degree, I, I hope that, you know, some of this comes through. I, you know, there's, there's a whole bunch of requirements of what, what gets points and what doesn't. So part of, partially, I, I trust a little bit that the Downtown Advisory Board would be listening to some of this and figuring out, helping us identify what is truly new, what is truly an innovative use, or will, will get to a market that we're not currently bringing in. So I, but I, Commissioner Eastman, I hear you that it's, that I don't want, all of it, you know, our business partners are great partners to help with, but it can't just be that all we've done is, your normal folks are coming to something, you know. But you're right, we don't have a bunch of places that charge normally. So it's, with that open access, it's probably kind of always been there. So similar concerns, the fifty-one percent would be a little more restrictive, you know, as opposed to what it is now.
If, if I could make a suggestion concerning Commissioner Eastman's concerns, the, excuse me, my voice is drying up. The rankings in order, the minimum scores they have to receive for either the Tier Ones or, or the Tier Twos, which is in the, if you go to, broadcast can go to page ten, which is up from where you are. Keep going, please. Sorry, I'm going to take my glasses. It's going to be, sorry, it's going to be in Section B, Event Information is where you're going to go. Thank you. A little further down? And keep going. We're going to go to Section B, which is going to be where they're, a Section A, and one more down from here. Okay, so this starts off where it explains what the city's goals are. We're the equitable community, more sustainable community, great place to live and experience. So right now, they're required to explain at the very top of this, I'm going to put my glasses back on. Stay on the next page. One more down, right, okay, stop right there. So explain how this will positively impact City of Gainesville and specifically Downtown Gainesville requires. So that is one of them as a required point. The other points that they're required to make to meet the three is they have to address at least two of the other City of Gainesville goals out of the five. So that was a limiter. If you increase that by, say, another point, which right now they have to make three points. If you made it to four points, they would have to have an answer that satisfies staff effectively as to how they're addressing the City of Gainesville's goals, strategic goals. That would be more of a limiter. So perhaps your, your concern is, you know, a bar might be trying to do an event. Perhaps their event can address the City of Gainesville's goals, perhaps it can't. But that would be another way to put a restrictor on if you're trying to assure that you're targeting events that are going to be very beneficial to the city and meet the, get the city's strategic goals. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Willetts. Commissioner Eastman?
I was going to propose, because there's a way to thread the needle. I mean, there are two tiers here, right? So, so the first tier is, is only five thousand dollars, and that is a, that is binary. So it's like, if you pass go, you collect the five thousand dollars, if you don't, you don't get it, right? And then the other one is the Downtown Advisory Board, which is thirty thousand dollars. Only two events, right, are going forward with that. That is, that's more qualitative. And the Downtown Advisory Board, that is filled with folks that know downtown that are in there, are literally scoring all of this. And I trust that through a kind of qualitative, quantitative, whatever you would call it, like a process where someone is really reviewing and deciding what makes sense and what doesn't make sense. You'd probably weed out some of the things that sort of pass the smell test and some that don't. You could cert, you could add the fifty-one percent to the five thousand dollar one and not the, so the Tier One, not the Tier Two, which I think would solve my problem. What you're referring to, that's, I mean, an interesting proposal about the, because this would be, you'd have to say, how this improves, how this supports an equitable development, more sustainable community, a great place to live and experience, resilient local economy, or best-in-class neighbor services. I mean, I, I still don't see how, you know, just like a dance club, having a free open night where in the, you know, you can go and buy drinks, but you can go dancing. I mean, that would promote a resilient local economy, it'd be a great place to live and experience. Is that an equitable community? I mean, I don't know what the third one would be. But also, if you're having it in a public space, you have that same kind of question. I don't know if that necessarily solves that exact problem. I do think that putting fifty-one percent on the Tier One, I don't know if that, if that would be an issue for you guys, if Steph has any, any feedback on it. I, I, I think that would solve my problem. And then if we're fine with that after the fact, if in this next iteration of all of this, we're comfortable with, you know, finding some way to say, you know, substantial public space or some way that threads that need a little bit better, I'm fine with that. But I guess that would be my motion when it comes forward is to, let me pull this up, approve, approve that with, approve this with a fifty-one percent of the Tier One would be, would, would make me feel more comfortable, that we're not going to have a significant amount of applicants that don't necessarily fit what we were trying to go for with this. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Eastman, Commissioner Buck, and then we'll go to public comment if there is.
Yeah, mine was quick. It was just a line of lines. We have the opportunity to, to change this or evaluate it, you know, at, at kind of what, what frequency, what intervals, would we be able to come back to this, see how it worked in six months, a year? What would GCRRA staff recommend?
So we will be coming back every quarter to do a GCRRA general update. So we would be able to advise the commission if we believe that it needed to be modified. If there were issues or things that we wanted to make improvements, we would take it to our advisory board initially to run the proposed changes through them. And then if, we would bring it here. If there are very minor tweaks, they can be done via de minimis change with city manager's approval or, or their designee. But if we saw something that was an obvious issue, we would be able to bring it as soon as we could schedule it back for a city commission meeting.
Was there, was, was there any disagreement between any of the GCRRA staff and maybe the Downtown Advisory Board for this kind of, you know, holistic amount of recommendations?
The Downtown Advisory Board did provide a lot of input in the shaping. As Commissioner Eastman noted, staff had actually recommended originally the fifty-one percent for the public space. But the Downtown Advisory Board preferred the language that's in the program currently. That's why we brought that forward. So there, there, there are always going to be slight differences. But we want to bring to you what has been agreed to by the Downtown Advisory Board as part of our presentation to you.
It's kind of like a full package. Yeah, Commissioner Eastman, I hear you, and I have the, I have a similar concern. I think we'd probably be just better suited at the moment for going. We, we have a Downtown Advisory Board, we charge them for a reason, we support what they say. We brought, we brought forth through, through our GCRRA staff what they have. And then we immediately see what, what might be a weakness or something that would improve upon. For example, like an event that seemed to have been a regular event, you talked about it, Commissioner Willetts, too, and all of a sudden, we're funding it, and that, that business might have funded already. Well, that would, that would require some immediate changes at that point. Brought forth for GCRRA, and they say, oh, we saw this, let's, let's change that to make sure, because that was not the intent. So that would be my thought, Commissioner Eastman, is we, we move with what we have right here, and we allow GCRRA staff to implement the program, move past the pilot, support the DAB, but reevaluate it, especially if there's something that comes forward here in six months or a year to, to make sure that it fits, fits the goals. But that's just, that's just me. So thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Buck. Commissioner Chestnut, and then public comment.
Commissioner Buck, I thought you were headed in a direction to ask for a pilot program for youth earmarked money that they, to see if we had any youth programming that would work to get families downtown. Were you going in that direction initially?
It's like you're far more innovative than I was. I just, I was thinking that there's got to be ways to, to increase our leveraging of getting the word out to organizations we previously have not maybe, maybe gotten the word to. And that's clearly youth and family, and I made a couple of suggestions that it, it is a great idea. But again, we, we just need to make sure that we, we're diversifying the groups that come down for future generations. So thank you for bringing that up. I didn't even think about that.
Yeah, well, I, I think when we have a motion coming forward, I'd like to see a, a pilot added for youth programming, just to see an incentive. And I think to pick up on what Commissioner Duncan Walker was talking about in terms of having some training, some earmarked training, and she may want to pick up on that. But earmarked training that we can, you can come back to us and show that you've done it and how you've planned it, but to reach out to, I would say, underserved populations that don't normally come downtown, that don't normally see themselves as part of the downtown scene. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Chestnut. Let's go to the public comment, and then we'll come back up here for another round.
Currently, I have no one signed up for public comment.
Come on up, Pastor Rolz.
So in just, Ron Rolz, Radio Buffalo AM chief. So in just listening, a little bit of wisdom that I would probably share, there are some of us in the community that feels that in many instances, goalposts are moved as the game goes along. And so if you have an opportunity to see a wise decision, and I'm kind of commenting to, to what you just said, Commissioner, if you see an opportunity to correct something upfront as opposed to down the road, it might help you avoid the impression that, wow, when we applied, the goalpost moved. And so go ahead and take the time, get the work done, and make sure that it looks fair and equitable upfront so we can follow through, and then you don't have that impression throughout the community that when I tried to, to do this, the goalpost moved.
Thank you, Pastor Rolz.
Those are last speaker, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Commissioner Eastman, I'll get to you in just a second. I, all good ideas that we brought forward up here. But I'm also sensitive to the fact that we asked the Advisory Board to advise and, and help staff refine what came to us. So we have a lot of staff time working on it, but also this Advisory Board putting their, their thoughts into this. And not saying I won't vote for anything different, but, but I, I don't, I, I don't want the Advisory Board to feel like they, they wasted their time on, on the process either. So just a, a thought before we go forward with anything else there. And again, these are all really good ideas, and I like a lot of what I hear. But I, I do want to be mindful of, of the process that we asked the board to, to go through.
Which is enhancing what they brought forward.
Right. They may not see it that way. Commissioner Eastman?
Yeah, I really do appreciate the Downtown Advisory Board, all their feedback they put forward. They brought, staff brought forward a series of ideas here. And I think they brought five different, one, two, three, four, five changes, oh, six changes to the overall, to this, all of which I think are good. One of which was just, we went from a hundred percent in public spaces to now up for both tiers. And I guess, and what my motion is saying is just that we are now going fifty-one percent, so even less, but only for one of those tiers. So that, so the one that the Downtown Advisory Board, which I think was the main thing they were focused on, was the sort of large events, right? That was a big push for them. They still have, that portion of it is completely in the way that they want it. It is substantial public space, they have a lot more flexibility as to how they're funding it. My focus is really just on the one that is completely staff-driven, not Downtown Advisory Board-driven. And I just want to make sure that there's some bars around that so that it doesn't get misused. And then if we want to loose flex, make it more flexible in that second iteration, I'm perfectly fine with that. So, and then to Commissioner Chestnut's point, we have, there's a hundred thousand dollars allocated, right? Sixty thousand is going to two large events, forty thousand to the smaller ones, right? And so if, if we did do one of the Tier One events and earmarked that for a youth programming within downtown, I, I think that would solve her idea of a, of a pilot, and that's just one of the, that's forty divided by five. It'd be eight, so one of the eight events is youth-focused? With, how does, how, how does that sound like a way of kind of solving the problem of making sure we have at least some youth programming that goes through this?
I think that would solve that. It's still going to be a catch of, it would be the first group that submitted a complete application. Because we're not, there's no, we're not building any ranking of what application is better to any other application for a youth application. The pilot version of this program did have a group called Theater Connects Apply. That was teenagers, they were going to do an event downtown at the Hippodrome. So the word is getting out there, and we will continue to work to make sure the word does get out there to the groups. If there were a specific five thousand dollar for a youth call-out, we'd probably need to understand what it was that comprised that youth group. Are they solely going to be high school students? Are we going to say middle school and high school students? How do we make that specific determination if we put that guardrail in there for, say, one of those grant pieces to go towards a group like that? Before, yeah, Commissioner Buck wanted to go ahead and say back.
Commissioner, so I was just thinking, while I component with Commissioner Chestnut, what you said was, really got me thinking, we, we probably don't want to put that in this particular motion at the moment because we're kind of changing criteria for the entire program. But, but we would probably want to kick that back to GCRRA and Downtown Advisory Board and say, how can we do it? How can we incorporate it as a component? Otherwise, we would kind of run the risk of maybe having some, I love this word collateral, Mr. Mayor, so collateral impacts, but have other impacts on the program at the moment that we've already got here. But what you said is, is right. We should, we should find a way to make a component of the program focused on bringing younger people downtown. I don't think we should probably do it in the original motion, would be my thought, because then we're trying to impact a whole bunch of other things that we've already been done with. But thanks for letting me speak.
Just refer it back.
Yeah, start with.
Refer it to staff and GCRRA.
Thank you, Commissioner Duncan Walker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just simply going to say that same thing, that I'm, I'm uncomfortable with trying to cobble that together up here on the dais. And I think that we owe it to staff to be able to take the idea, really develop it and bring it back to us in a way where we can really have some substantial conversation on it once you're able to provide us with more information. And I also think it's important that we, as a, a commission, kind of make clear to the Downtown Advisory Board what our goals are, too. They're doing wonderful work, and I greatly appreciate it. But I think that this conversation about making sure that we bring families downtown is one that they need to hear from us. So at the next conversation that we do have that with them, I have not had a chance to make one of their meetings yet, so perhaps some of the others of you have. But when we see them the next time, I think it would be really important for us to be able to express some of these ideas to them. Because while they are certainly experts in development and other things, I think that it is the vision of this board that needs to be clearly. I think that it is the vision of this board that needs to be clearly articulated to them and how we want to see downtown grow and develop. I think it's only fair for us to share that with them, so when they bring us ideas like what they presented before, those ideas can be incorporated, because I would have loved to have seen them bring this back in this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan Walker, and I'll add on to that, when we created the, uh, the guidelines for Who Serves on the downtown advisory board, we didn't, and correct me if I'm wrong, somebody, but I, we didn't include folks who don't work downtown and don't own things downtown. And this was a, a, a worry that I had going in, we, we, we have a lot of input from people who, who own and work downtown, but we do not include a lot of people that were trying to get to come downtown as part of that. There, you know, the, it, it, you could have the, the, the best thinking possible about exactly how to make an event run smoothly and, and how, and business runs smoothly and how the city can be a part of that. But that doesn't necessarily mean that that event works for the people that were trying to get to come to the event. And I think that is a missing piece, um, of, of the overall conversation, or several missing pieces perhaps of the overall conversation. And that is not a knock on anybody who's serving, that is just, uh, a, a point that, that we, we need people from, from all the neighborhoods to, to get some input, or some neighborhoods at least, to get some input on what would bring them downtown, what would bring their literal neighbors downtown into, uh, into these events. And, and that's not baked into the process. So just a thought as, as we move forward on, on thing, all things downtown. Uh, Commissioner Willetts.
Thank you, Mr. Um, and I, thank you, Commissioner Duncan Walker, because I, this is something I think, I think we're getting out is this idea that, hey, out of all of this, something there should be kind of youth-focused to bring them, so they are part of downtown. And I think it's natural that there, we have kind of different groups that, particularly with downtown advisory board as we set it up, um, there's the competing kind of like, are we, it's the nine-to-fivers versus, they're going to downtown nine-to-five versus people who are after, and is it early evening, late evening, is it much younger who are down there for a certain type of entertainment versus a more, a different type of, you know, entertainment? Uh, people who are not students versus are, and so, and I think in all of that conversation, the people who don't have an active voice, literally the children, you know, but often the, the parents of those children don't have that, that same kind of active voice in it, and, um, so they, they are natural tensions, it's nothing that we created, we didn't, you know, they're natural tensions, but I think what downtown advisory board does need to hear from us, because I think it is, is, I hear that there's a consensus that a piece of it has to be, because we could, we could build the most amazing downtown that has got just a hub of all kinds of money-making and tax revenue and always busy, it, it, that would never have a single child under eighteen in it, because we can do it, I mean, we, we really can, I mean, um, but it's not, but we just need to make sure that we all, I think the consensus from here is that, that downtown involves people under eighteen in, in some ways, not all the time, definitely not after, you know, nine or ten o'clock on a Friday night, we, we understand that. Um, but that at other times, they really are, they need to be part of downtown. Um, so I, I, I don't, I don't think it's in this motion, this, that we should do it, um, but something, something in there. And we, we do some with Parks and Rec, we, you know, the, the, at the Christmas parade or the holiday parade, that dance, you know, concerted effort, and that's wonderful, but expanding out from that, whether it is Theater Connect with the high schoolers who are bringing high schoolers downtown, um, understanding how to navigate it at a downtown as a high schooler is, is important. They need to learn, you know, uh, kind of the real world, that is not the school or the mall or Celebration Point, like, a real public space with, um, with cars and walkers and, and what is public and what is private. And it's important for their development to really under, to, to get a piece of it. So I'm glad you brought it up, I think we all kind of hinted at it, but to really clearly bring it up, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, for describing it, it's nothing the downtown advisory board, we just haven't, I don't think we've clearly communicated and we didn't set it up that way, but it's an ongoing conversation to say, we want a little, a little more on the youth programming. Um, even if it's a couple of times a year, you know, on a weekend, we're not asking them to bring down high schoolers on a Friday night, that's not what we're asking, uh, but maybe on a Saturday morning or Saturday afternoon. So I just, this is good conversation around that, so we, they hear it. Um, as far as the, the rest of the proposal, I, I'm willing to give them a, a shot and try to say, all right, this is, this is, this is this version of it, and we can come back to it later if it's like, if we end up getting a bunch of events that just didn't feel like what we were looking for, we can come back to it later. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Eastman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'd like to move to approve the downtown events grant program, um, uh, leaving, uh, all tier-two events with the, uh, um, with the downtown advisory board recommendations and to place a fifty-one percent of events in the tier-one take place in publicly owned spaces, and then to refer back to the GCRRA and the downtown advisory board, uh, recommendations on improving youth programming in downtown.
We have a motion in a second. Uh, I don't see any other, well, I'm using other light, Commissioner Buck.
Just, um, Commissioner Eastman, thank you for that. Uh, read the second portion of the motion there, please.
Yeah, I, I'm using my, my handwriting here, the, um, refer back to the GCRRA and the downtown advisory board, uh, for recommendations on enhancing youth programming in downtown.
Close enough for me.
Okay, I see no, no for the lights, so all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that passes unanimously with Commissioner Engle absent. Madam Clark.